Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the meeting. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 28th, 2021 Public Board Meeting, Neshamani School Board Directors. Excuse me. Call Stanford a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbeck.
Present.
Mr. Kovitz.
Here.
Mr. Merrington.
Here.
Mr. Parentano.
Present.
Mr. Sorillo.
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan is absent with prior notice. We have a quorum.
Thank you. The Board met in executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Are there any announcements this evening?
No announcements.
All right. Now, Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. This, our last week, saw our first back-to-school night at the elementary level. Classrooms and parking lots were very full. It was very nice to see parents and students getting back to the way it's supposed to be. This Thursday, our middle schools repeat, and then on October 7th, the Neshamani High School will have its back-to-school night. Every month through my office, Mr. Chris Stanley sends out a wonderful newsletter. Repeating all the good things happening in the Neshamani in that newsletter would take a significant period of time. So if you have not read that or browsed through it, please, please do so. I will highlight that last week, last Saturday, Neshamani High School had its homecoming event on Saturday. Things started at 9:00 a.m. on campus and ran through 4:00 p.m., where students and staff alike had a good time getting back to the normal. As far as our COVID report, I think parents in the community are very familiar with the weekly update. Our dashboard indicates a handful of cases throughout our 10 schools. Attendance continues to be very good at Neshamani in all buildings. Absentee rates hover in the area of 5%, which is pre-pandemic numbers. Number of kids enrolling in NSDVA is less than previous years and pretty much stable over the course of the last couple of weeks. The incident rate in the county has been stable for the last five weeks at the 125, 120 level per 100,000, which is in the high range, but at least it's staying stable. And then, as I said, the incidents in our schools vary from no cases in some of our smaller elementary schools to Neshamani High School having cases somewhere in the teens over the last four weeks. So we seem to have that at a manageable point. We're hoping it stays that way, hoping it goes in the other direction, so we can continue with the positive. On a final note, I'd like to thank everyone who stepped up to volunteer or be hired to drive a van or be a bus aide. We have solved that particular problem over the course of the last week, so we have plenty of van drivers and bus aides. Thank you. What we still need are bus drivers, which require a little bit more to be able to do that, and instructional assistance. So again, I ask, even if you're not looking for a job, we have a job that you might want to do, and we'll pay you a little bit for it, if you can help get our kids back to school in a normal fashion. Mr. Parentano, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. This will bring us to our first period of public comment. Those that have signed up will be called to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. Please address the board, state your name, area for which you live, your occupation, and please, no personal attacks. Mrs. Burns, you want to call the...
Number one, Sarah Harvey.
Hello, I am Sarah Harvey, 5th grade student at Bequesting Middle School. First, I want to thank the entire Board and Dr. McGee for allowing me to speak tonight. Every day, 43 children are diagnosed with cancer each year in the United States. I became part of that statistic. In September 2014, when I was diagnosed with retinoblastoma eye cancer, I was diagnosed on September 15th and had my left eye removed on September 18th of that year. My parents chose life oversight, and for that decision, I am here and alive today. I just celebrated seven years cancer-free the other week. But I am one of the lucky ones. Almost 2,000 children die each year due to the lack of funding for research. Childhood cancer research only receives 4% of funding for cancers. Yes, only 4%. In the last 30 years, only three new cancer drugs have been developed and approved by the FDA to fight childhood cancer. On Friday, September 17th, I, with the help of my family, friends, teachers, and staff in the district, have already started a campaign that I would like to discuss with Dr. McGee. My mom made a post, and within a few hours, my principal, Mr. Hunt, reached out and said we would make this happen. And he did. From police departments, Bequesting, Tewanka, Hoover, Maple Point, Sandberg, and even the high school, people wore yellow and gold to spread awareness for childhood cancer. What started with me asking my mom at 12:30 noon on a Thursday for some ribbon to hand out to my classmates and teachers turned into people throughout our community supporting my mission the next day. Kids opted out of their red, white, and blue clothes on Constitution Day and wore gold instead to help me with my mission. Mr. Hunt wanted to make sure that my initiative did not go unnoticed, and he went above and beyond for myself and a fellow Bequesting student who is also a childhood cancer survivor. Mr. Hunt had Bequesting go gold on Tuesday, September 21st. My little brother, Sonny, with the help of his teachers and staff at Tewanka, have also been wearing their yellow ribbons this month to help spread awareness. I made yellow ribbons for the high school girls volleyball team as they reached out. Dr. McGee, you said to my mom that Pink Out is a student-run initiative, and that may be the case at the high school level, but in your lower-level, middle and elementary schools, it is not a student-run initiative, but it is a school initiative. I know this because each year, for the past six years, we have celebrated Pink Out to coincide with the high school and our elementary schools and middle schools. Dr. McGee, I am here today to propose my student initiative to ask you to make district-wide awareness every September for childhood cancer, for our district to go gold for our children like we go pink in October for breast cancer awareness. Dr. McGee, and from the Board and our entire Neshamani community, I am asking to set up a lunch with you, so we can sit down and go over ideas on how our district can recognize childhood cancer awareness every September going forward. Thank you.
Jennifer Brenner, number two, Jennifer Brenner.
And try to read my own handwriting, which is the toughest part. My name's Jennifer Brenner. I'm from Twin Oaks. I'm self-employed. At the last meeting, there was mention of possibly voting again for October 1st, I believe, on the topic of mask choice. I just wanted to point out that Pen Ridge, Council Rock, Central Bucks, all have kept mask choice in the hands of the families without requiring a doctor's authorization. After one month of school, all of those school districts' numbers have dropped. Meanwhile, our children are masked in gym class, still masked, so physically exerting themselves, getting sweaty, still wearing a mask. I, as far as I'm aware, at least for my daughter, they're not getting mask breaks. Maybe I was just under the wrong impression that they would. But what I was really here for tonight was to thank the Board for being so welcoming to the children, to come up here and speak up, no matter what the topic was that they had on their minds. You all listened and encouraged them. I think we all know how public speaking can paralyze even the bravest of adults, and for them to see at such a young age that it's not so scary can only help them in the future and may encourage them to be on a school board of their own someday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, Berkeley Brenner.
Hi, I'm Berkeley Brenner. I'm a student here at Maple Point. First off, I'd like to thank you for the lockers. I really appreciate it, and I enjoy them. But I would like masks to be optional, because parents should make their own decisions about their child wearing masks. But really, as students and kids, we're over this. We just want a partially normal year with seeing faces in your friend's lap. This has been going on for two years, so please give us something normal. I hope you consider what I said. Thank you for listening.
Number four, Daryl Brenner. Number four, Daryl Brenner. Number five, Matthew Taylor.
Matthew Taylor, Red Rose Gate, self-employed. There are 13 school districts in Bucks County. Of those 13 districts, only three of them are allowing mask exemptions with just a simple parent signature. No doctor or licensed medical professional required. Those three districts also do not quarantine healthy children. These three, those three districts are Pen Ridge, Council Rock, and Central Bucks. Using the Bucks County Health Department dashboard data from August 30th to September 27th, communities within those school districts have seen a 6% decrease in their seven-day case counts, from 283 cases down to 266. In the remaining 10 school district communities where masks are required and healthy kids are sent home to quarantine, cases have increased by 50% from 359 to 537. In Neshamani, cases have increased 60% from 57 on August 30th up to 91 on September 27th. I have with me a chart. It might be hard to see. I'll email it to everybody, but it charts COVID case prevalence within school district municipalities from August 30th to September 27th. The chart shows that Pen Ridge, Council Rock, and Central Bucks municipalities have a lower seven-day case count than that of the other 10 school districts which require masks in school. We have been in school for almost four weeks now, and the data is telling you that masking children in school has little to no impact on the community, so why are we continuing to do it? What costs are we, what costs are our children paying, and for what benefit? Communities aren't affected by not requiring masks in school, and hospitals aren't overflowing with child COVID cases. If you check the hospital census for area hospitals, including CHOP, it's basically the same as it was a month ago. CHOP reported eight pediatric COVID patients on August 27th. As of September 17th, that number dropped to five. At the last board meeting, it was voted on that the mask requirements would automatically revert back to optional on October 1st, unless brought to another vote. I hope that's still the case. The next few months will be very telling. I've said it, and others have said it as well. It won't stop with masks. Next, it'll be vaccines for five-year-old kids. If we won't give the parents the option on masking their kids, I don't have much confidence that you'll give us a choice when it comes to vaccinating our children. Will we finally give parents the option to do what is best for their children, or will we simply comply? For me personally, what happens within these next few months will determine where I send my children to school moving forward. I'm prepared to do what is best for my children and pull them out of the Neshamani School District if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, Alex York.
My first time. Getting a little high anxiety for coming up and speaking to you. My name is Alex York. I'm in Forsythia Gate. I am an insurance professional in the occupational health field. Mother of four. I have a 6th, 8th, 10th, and 12th grader at Neshamani. I'm up here before you, battling a little bit of high anxiety to be up here for you. I don't have statistics to cite. I'm just a mom of four, who is fighting for normalcy for my kids, fighting to allow them to allow their natural immunity to do its job, not just for COVID, but for all the viruses. Their little systems need to fight for every year, every winter coming up. We've had COVID through our house, so we've been there, done that. I was here at the last meeting, at the last meeting, I know as mentioned. It's just 18 days. So we're looking at those 18 days in the past month that we've had 18 days of in-person school, which we are so thankful for. My kids need to be in school. I've definitely learned that last year. But it's sports, of school social events, indoor and outdoor. We were at the football game this weekend. It was awesome to be there. And yes, it was outdoor, but we were packed in those stands like sardines, shoulder to shoulder, and it was wonderful. Very happily there. Just to, one of the other points I just wanted to make, it's already been made a couple times here, going back to some of the numbers, Pen Ridge, Council Rock, Central Bucks, all of them that have less stricter mandates and less stricter mitigation in place, their numbers have been better than ours. I do believe that as a parent of four, I have not been very vocal in the past. We've been there. We've been trying to work with everybody, try to just, you know, fight and do what we need to do, but I think I'm part of a large silent majority who, as it was nicely said earlier, are over it. It's time for us to learn to live with getting through this virus, and we are just asking for choice for our children. We know the school board elections are around the corner, and I think the silent majority of parents that I talk to out there are over it, and I think many of us you'll see be out there voting during election time. So again, 18 days. Thank you very much.
Number seven, Carrie D. Gregorio.
Hello, I'm on right, yes. Hi, Carrie D. Gregorio. I live on Anne Drive in Feasterville, and I'm a technology trainer. I was here two weeks ago, I believe, we had the last meeting. I spoke on behalf of Neshamani Core Swim Team. I've been speaking to some of the parents that are a part of the swim team as well, and we're really hoping that you guys decide to allow us to swim. I know last time we were here, you said you were going to make the decision in two weeks, which I believe is today, or maybe Friday. I think October 1st might be the date, so just wanting to see if there is any updates on that. Thank you.
Number eight, Kim Gorman.
Good evening, Kim Gorman, Red Rose Gate, holistic health practice manager, teacher, whole bunch of other things, too. I don't really have a lot prepared surprise tonight. People have actually already said what I needed to say, which is great. I just wanted to point out a couple things. With the current masking order from our wonderful Allison Beam, who is not a doctor, but in her order, there is nothing that requires a medical professional's signature at all, and I know we're doing a great job by trying to make it open. However, there are so many kids that doctors won't sign it. It's kind of sad. I don't know what they're afraid of, but they won't. So there's a lot of kids that really want one, that aren't able to get one. So just as other people had said, my request is that if October 1st is not the magic day that we all thought it was going to be, which I would be thrilled, then I feel like the exemption needs to be updated to have a parent sign it, like the rest of the other districts. We had already just heard, they're doing fine, everybody's doing okay. They have a lot, we have like, what, 1%? There's one kid in Schweitzer that has an exemption, one kid in the whole school. And kudos to that kid, because I know my kids have one, and they don't, they're like, we're still the only ones. They still feel, my daughter was like, someone behind me didn't have a mask, and she was so excited. But she won't even take hers all the way off, because she doesn't want to be standing out. So it's kind of silly. So that would be my one request. And as somebody else had already mentioned, too, the fact that, you know, I was at the football game. I know most of you were at the football game, and I don't care if it's outside. They were all over each other, half clothed. They have writing on their shirts. They're breathing and yelling in each other's faces, and that's okay, but they can't sit still in a classroom without a mask. It's just, and I know you all understand it's illogical, but kids are the only ones that are suffering through this right now, because all of us adults can basically do what we want, but these poor children are not able to do that. And I just saw a chart that said like, a 7th grader, the last time they had normal school, was in 4th grade. That's crazy when you look at that. Kindergartners have never had a normal school. They don't know what it's like to actually go to school and see their faces. My daughter did an activity in child development the other day, and she sent me a picture, and the kids are coming in soon. They're going to have the little 3rd and 4th graders, 4th-year-olds, and they had to do an activity about a mask with a folded-up piece of paper, and they're trying to teach them that there's emotions underneath the paper. I was appalled. I was like, first of all, you just spent an hour of a class doing this, but you're going to have these 3- and 4-year-olds come in, and you're supposed to interact with them, and they're going to try to teach them that there's emotions under there, when they should be able to see that there are emotions under there. So I really am hoping that magic day is October 1st, and this is all going to go away, so we can all get back to having a normal life, because these poor kids are the only ones that are suffering. Thank you.
Number nine, Jennifer Brown.
Evening. My name's Jennifer Brown. I live in Georgetown Development of Langhorne. So a few weeks ago, there was a student in my son's class who tested positive for COVID. My son wasn't really that close to that student. However, they had to take him out of the cafeteria and have him sit with other 20 kids by himself, and he would come home every single day crying his eyes out, saying, "Mom, all these kids are looking at me, and I feel like they're judging me, and I feel isolated." And it broke my heart that he was in there, and I says, "Well, how long do you have to sit in there?" And apparently, it was 14 days. Well, I went in there after about maybe six, seven days, and I said, "Look, my son had a low transmission rate around him. He wasn't even near this kid. Why does he still have to sit outside the cafeteria?" And the secretary was like, "Well, no, he shouldn't have to sit outside the cafeteria if he wasn't even close to that student." I said, "Well, he's outside the cafeteria, and he's actually getting very depressed over it. Like, he's supposed to be enjoying 5th grade, and he's not." And it's actually breaking my heart to, you know, I don't even know what to say to him. And I said, "Hopefully, things will get better soon." My concern is, when this vaccine is approved for 5- to 11-year-olds, which is around Halloween, I believe, we're seeing breakthrough cases with adults. How do we know that's not going to happen with the children? And then, what are we going to do about that? Are we going to count those cases as well, even if they are vaccinated? I mean, it's going to happen. So I'm just wondering what the plan is for that, and I'm just hoping that if, God forbid, there is another student in my son's class that does test positive for COVID, and my son's not near them, that he doesn't have to be isolated again, because it's really damaging his mental state. So thank you very much for hearing me out.
Number 10, James Powell.
Sorry. I have a little anxiety, like everybody else here, because we're all like this, over all these mandates that you guys push on our children. I don't know how there's not more parents here standing up, fighting for these children.
State your name.
My name is James Powell. You already have it on your sheet. My name is James Powell.
Okay.
I live in Twin Oaks. I'm a warehouse manager.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
So like I said, I don't know how there's not more parents here standing up for these children that can't fight for themselves. We have a choice as parents for our children, and you're taking away that choice from us. I didn't have kids so you could raise them for me. I raise my kid. These people, they all raise their kids, and they can make choices for their kids. You people need to stop making those choices for them. It's not your right. It is not in the Constitution that you get to do that to us. I understand that there is a pandemic, but we were all here last time in this meeting. All of you weren't wearing masks. How many cases did we have from that meeting? Zero. I've talked to people. Nobody's gotten sick coming here or going to football games. You can't even have a kid swim, because you're taking that away from him. How is that fair? Last time we were here, you told us you got grants, because these kids were falling behind, falling behind. How are you falling behind when you're in kindergarten? It's not right. We are taking away our kids' education, because you are afraid of what? I've worked 20 months through this thing. Every day, I had to go to work. I didn't get a choice to sit at home and play on my computer. No, I had to go out and work so you guys would have stuff in your houses. I work in a warehouse. Yes, I had to be there so you could have things. Did I get COVID? No. I know people who've gotten COVID that I've worked with, and they all made it through it, because they took care of themselves. They washed their hands. They did what we're supposed to do for our immune system. Our immune system is what keeps us alive, and if you keep on giving these kids the sanitizer and all that stuff, you're killing their immune system. We need to be here for our children. We all need to be here for our children, because they don't have a voice, and you're sitting on your phone, and you don't care. That's all I have to say about this.
Number 11, Jessica Brown.
Hi, my name is Jessica Brown, and I am going to fight for the option for optional masks. I go to school every day with a mask, and I come home with headaches, and like, I'm really tired. I did a lot of research, and people are taking their masks into labs, and they're not finding any COVID, but they're finding mold and stuff, which I know is not good to breathe in. I'll respect anyone that wears a mask, but I think it should be an option. Everyone says it's my body, my choice, but how come it's not a choice to wear a mask? Thank you.
No further signups.
Thank you all. Okay, this will bring us to Section 2, our routine matters for this evening. Going to make a master motion for Section 2.01 Minutes, 2.02 Treasurers Report, 2.03 Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases, 2.04 Investments, 2.05 Exonerations. A master motion's been made on 2.01 through 2.05. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8 to 0. Section 3, 3.01 Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. Be resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of administrative staff, and there is one name associated with this motion. Motion's been made on 3.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes 8 to 0. Mrs. Hollenbeck, would you do 4.01, please?
I'd like to make a motion for 4.01 Appointments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff. There are eight names on the list.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. Motion's been made on 4.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes 8 to 0. Mr. Merrington, would you do 4.02, please?
4.02 Tenure Awards. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following tenure status of certified staff. There's one name on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Merrington. Motion's been made on 4.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sorillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Motion passes 8 to, I'm sorry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes 8 to 0. Mrs. Bowman, would you do 4.03, please?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion. 4.03 Leaves of Absence. Leave of absence resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence for certified staff, and there's five names on the list.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 4.03. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All in favor? Eight, zero. Mrs. Boyle, would you do 4.04, please?
4.04 Revised Leave of Absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following revisions to previously approved leaves of absence for certified staff, and there is one name.
Thank you. Motion's made of 4.04. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Cirillo, would you do 4.05, please?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion for 4.05 Co-Curricular Resignations. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following co-curricular resignation for certified staff, and there is one name.
Thank you. Motion's been made on 4.05. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Merington, would you do 4.06, please? And you have to read every name.
I'll take a break, then. This is 4.06 Co-Curricular Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following co-curricular appointments for certified staff. There are 119 names on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Merington. Motion's been made on 4.06. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Kovitz, would you do 4.03, please? I mean, I'm sorry, 4.07.
I know what you're talking about. All right. I'd like to make a motion for 4.07 Ancillary Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following ancillary appointments for certified staff, Sixth Section and Department Chairs, and there are two names.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. Motion's been made on 4.07. I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. He's on a roll this evening, yes. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Hollenbeck, Personnel 5, please. 5.01, I'm sorry. The 01's missing. It just says 5.
I was making sure and counting the names.
Yes.
Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of support staff, and there are 25 names on the list.
Thank you. Motion's been made on 5.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Who got that? Mrs. Boyle? Mrs. Boyle got faster than you.
Beat you, too.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize another long-term Nishamani employee with 33.7 years of service is moving into the next stage of life. Miss Sandra Gundy has been with us in our Grounds and Facilities Department, and we wish you a very happy and long retirement. Hearing none. Other? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. That brings us to...
5.02.
Yeah. We can master all these. Ms. Hollenbeck, would you master 5.02 through 5.06?
I'd like to make a master motion for 5.02 Appointments. 5.03 Leaves of Absence. 5.04 Revised Leaves of Absence. 5.05 Revised Returns from Leave. 5.06 Ancillary Appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. A master motion's been made for 5.02, 5.02 through 5.06. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz, was it? Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Bowman, 6.01, please.
I can't touch this. It's staticky. All right. 6.01 Overnight Trips. Whereas according to the board policy, 618 trips extending overnight are permitted by authorization of the Board of School Directors only. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the overnight trips listed below, and there's three trips included.
Thank you. Motion's been made, 6.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Cirillo, would you do 6.02, please?
Sure thing. I'd like to make a motion for 6.02 Out-of-District Placements. Whereas in order to meet the educational programming needs of specific students, it may be advantageous to utilize the services of out-of-district providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the out-of-district placements identified below, and there's one student.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Motion's been made on 6.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Oh, excuse me. We're going to give Mrs. Hollenbeck a break this time from the reading ledger, and we're going to pass that duty on to Mr. Allen here. You want to do 7.01? Mr. Allen?
I didn't do it. Didn't know it was that long.
I'd like to place a motion on the table.
Hit your button.
There we go. Motion on the table for 7.01 Resolution of Maple Point Elementary School Project. Whereas the Board of Directors of Nishamani School District hereby adopts and approves the following for the new Maple Point Elementary School Project. Reaffirmation of the Architectural Services Agreement with Spiesel Architectural Group, Inc. for the project. Reaffirmation of the Construction Management Services Agreement with Reynolds Construction Management, Inc. for the project. Engagement of RBC Capital Markets Limited to perform financial analysis for the project and to present to the Board of School Directors financing alternatives for the project. Engagement of Public Financial Management, Inc. as the financial advisor to the Board of School Directors for the project, and authorizing the superintendent with and upon the advice of the solicitor of such action as necessary to initiate and pursue any and all processes for the project required by Act 34 of 1973 of the Pennsylvania General Assembly, Section 7, 7.01-1 of the Public School Code of 1949 as amended. Now therefore, this resolution is adopted on this 28th day of September, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. A motion's been made on 7.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Hollenbeck, would you do 7.02, please?
7.02 Agreement with the School Operations Services Group, Inc. Whereas the Nishamani School District entered an agreement with School Operations Services Group, Inc. for the employment of substitute cleaners in 2017, and whereas the original agreement did not include substitute food service workers and substitute part-time IT technicians. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the Substitute Renewal Agreement with School Operations Services Group, Inc. in the form attached, subject to such modifications approved by the solicitor and superintendent of schools. Be it further resolved that the business administrator be authorized to execute a final agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. A motion's been made on 7.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Boyle, would you do 7.03, please?
7.03 A Pre-K Accounts Partnership
You got to hit the button there.
All right, okay. Whereas the Nishamani School District is a Pennsylvania pre-K counts grantee and is the lead agency in this partnership agreement, and whereas the Bucks IU provides early childhood programming to three and four-year-old children, and whereas the Nishamani School District and the Bucks IU desire to continue to work together to meet the needs of families in their service area, to allow more children to receive high-quality pre-K services, improve the quality and coordination of the early childhood programming within communities for three and four-year-old children, provide more inclusive settings for children with special needs, and help create a seamless transition from preschool to kindergarten. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached Pennsylvania pre-K accounts partnership agreement for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Motion's been made on 7.03. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Bowman, would you do 704, please?
Motion 704 Bucks County Technical High School Project Financing. Motion to approve the attached resolution to authorize and direct the issuance of revenue bonds in one or more series in 2022 and 2023 for the Bucks County Technical School Authority for the purposes of funding certain capital projects for the Bucks County Technical School, paying the costs and expenses on the financing and issuance of the revenue bonds, authorizing the Nishamani School District's leased rental debt in $25,500,000 bond issuance of, hold on, I can't even see this. Expenses of the financing and issuance of the revenue bonds, authorizing the Nishamani School District's leased rental debt in the amount not to exceed, what is that, $6 billion? I can't even, $6,928,350. Nishamani School District's 27.17% share of the collective $25,500 bond issuance for all districts, approving the execution of a lease agreement with the authority also attached hereto and authorizing the preparation and filing of a debt statement and other documentation as set forth in the attached bond resolution.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Bowman.
Doesn't have any input.
Yeah, well, you know, you got to come prepared, right? 7.04, a motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I have some commentary, but I'll save that for my board comment.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Motion's been made and seconded. Hearing nothing else. All in favor?
It's a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, Mrs. Burns. You're right.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Merington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
It's eight yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Kovitz, could you do 7.05, please?
I will do my best. I'd like to put forward 7.05 Gilmore and Associates Change Order Number One Penn.HOP Plans and Traffic Signal Design. Whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors approved and hired an architect and construction management company for the new Maple Point Elementary project, and whereas in any construction project, there may be change orders which need to be approved, and now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani School District authorizes the district business administrator to authorize the attached change order with Gilmore and Associates, Inc., with a revised date of August 24, 2021, subject to review, revisions if necessary, and approval by the district solicitor in an amount not to exceed $81,250.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. A motion's been made on 7.05. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, Mr. Tarente, could you just add some commentary to the need for this and why it was requested?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Parentano. There's really, I guess I'll say, three reasons for the need for this change order for Gilmore and Associates. During the sketch plan development for the project, there was a traffic signal improvement that may or may not be required by the township for land development. So that cost is probably the lion's share of this additional change order of $81,250. Okay, with that, they need to do an additional survey, a more detailed survey, which is about, you know, $15,000 to $16,000. So the remaining component is the HOP plans and the designs for that. It's the Highway Occupancy Permit Plan. That was quoted in the original agreement. It was an additional cost, and it was between $25,000 and $30,000. So, again, that is going to be required as part of land development with the township for this project. So they were within their range, $25,000 to $30,000. So.
All right. You couldn't hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. At all?
So, we heard you. Don't start.
No one at home could hear me, though. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
There's three reasons why the change order is approximately $81,000. There's a survey required for the traffic signal that was picked up during the land development process. A second is the HOP permit, the Highway Occupancy Permit Plan for the development that was quoted at between $25,000 and $30,000 in the original estimate with, or original contract with Gilmore. So that's, again, $30,000 approximately, and then a traffic signal plan for the project, which, again, was, it's about $30,000.
And this was necessary because they're deeming a light will be required somewhere in the intersection, or to determine if a light's going to be required in the intersection?
It's going to be a little bit of both, but most of it is for the traffic signal that's going to be needed and the necessary crosswalks, most likely along Langhorne, I'm sorry, Woodburn Road. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any additional questions from the board? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Cirillo, would you do 7.06?
I'd like to make a motion for 7.06 Gilmore and Associates Change Order Number Two Electrical and Telecom. Whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors approved and hired an architect and construction management company for the new Maple Point Elementary project, and whereas in any construction project, there may be change orders which need to be approved, and now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani School District authorizes the district business administrator to authorize the attached change order with Gilmore and Associates, Inc., with a revised date of September 14, 2021, subject to review, revisions if necessary, and approval by the district solicitor in an amount not to exceed $18,600.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. A motion's been made on 7.06. They're second? They're seconded.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. He's now ahead of Mr. Cirillo. No, I don't know. I don't know. Yeah. A motion for first and seconded. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, Mr. Tarente, could you offer the same, please?
Sure. This, again, this is a change order. It's $18,600 payable to Gilmore and Associates. This is for the design of the dry utilities. The original proposal and contract that we received from Gilmore only included the design of the dry utilities around the school itself, nothing from the existing school down to Woodburn and, I guess, Yardley-Langhorn Road. So this cost covers that, I guess, missing piece of the design.
And that's because those dry utilities can't be serviced from Maple Point. They have to have their own individual access.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns from the board? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Allen, could you do seven point zero seven, please?
Thank you, Mr. Piratano. Boilers near and dear to my heart. Lower Southampton Boiler Change Order. I'd like to bring a motion to the table. Whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors approved the boiler replacement bid on May 25, 2021, for Lower Southampton Elementary School. And whereas in any repair project, there may be change orders which need to be approved. And now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani School District authorizes the district business administrator to authorize the attached change order with GEM Mechanical Services with a date of August 18, 2021, subject to review, revisions if necessary, and approval by the district solicitor in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Motion's been made on seven point zero seven. May I have a second?
Second.
Ah, you guys are slow. Okay, motion's been made first and seconded. At this time, before we have any board commentary, I'd last ask our business administrator if he can add some light on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Piratano. The district in the... leading up to the summer work of 2021 had a boiler replacement at Lower South in the approximate cost of $400,000 to be completed this summer. However, we've been having difficulties with supply chain issues in actually getting a boiler, you know, ordered and on the way to the project. And so this, we have decided to change manufacturers in hopes of getting this project started, if you will. We've done all the design work, and we have also, based on our comments of last week at our facilities meeting, we have also altered some of the work around this to pay for this $10,000 change order. But the change order still exists and needs board approval, of which 40% of this will be paid by the IU.
And that's not 40% of the change order. That's 40% of the entire project.
Both.
Right. Yes. That's what I thought. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board on this issue? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero. That'll bring us to seven point zero eight. Mrs. Hollenbeck, you want to read that?
Seven point zero eight, NSPA Article VII, Section 5-1 Wage Adjustment for Bus Drivers. Whereas the Nishamani School District has a collective bargaining agreement with the Nishamani Education Support Professional Association through June 30, 2022. And whereas Article VII, Section 5-1 of the agreement permits the association and the district to put forth committees to discuss possible wage discrepancies based on market conditions. And whereas the committees for the district have met to discuss the need for wage increases to non-grandfathered bus drivers to attract and retain qualified employees. And now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the committee's recommendation that the following wage increases be approved as following. Classification B1 Bus Driver. Currently, it's twenty... for the 2021-22 school year is 1983. The increase is $2.17. So the adjusted 2021-2022 rate is $22.
Thank you, Mrs. Motion's been made on seven point zero eight. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by...
I'm going to give it to Mr. Kovitz because he's in a race over here, so. Now teasing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure he's ahead of Mr. Cirillo. That's all.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. On seven point zero eight, is there any comments, questions, or concerns? I have one question on this issue. Do we need to amend this motion for an effective date on this motion?
Tomorrow. I would ask you to do so if it's... if your intent is not to have this be effective tomorrow. If it was the board's intent to go back to make this effective the first of the school year, then I think that that needs to be made as part of the motion, or the motion needs to be amended to reflect that.
Would that be correct, Mr. Tarente? We'd have to reread it or just amend the motion?
You have a motion and a second, so you can amend the motion.
We can amend the motion. So at this time, I want to amend seven point oh eight to reflect that the wage adjustment increase will... shall be effective... What was the first day of school, Rob?
I don't know about the driver's first day. First day of school.
First day of school year.
For the 2122 school year.
Yeah.
September 1.
Okay.
Wasn't the first driver day.
So September 1?
No. Right. They worked around to September 1. September 1 was the first student day.
Okay. All right. Right. I'm going to amend the motion seven point zero eight to reflect effective September 1, 2021. Do I need a second for that amendment?
You do, yeah.
A second? By...
It was everyone. It was pretty much everyone.
So that's Mr. Cirillo is the second on that motion. They're now tied. So we have a first and a second. The motion reflects that the wage increase will be effective September 1, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero.
Was that the vote on the amendment?
Was that complete for the motion and the amendment?
You amended the motion. Now you have to take a vote on the amended motion. Right?
Didn't I just do that? No.
You took a vote on the amendment. Now you...
Okay. Now I would like to put a motion on the table, the amended seven point oh eight that reflects the retroactive date of 7/1/2021. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. We're breaking those two up.
I just wondered, Alan.
Right. Second by Mrs. Bowman. We have a first and a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Marrington, could you do seven point zero nine for me, please?
All right. Seven point zero... Seven point zero nine is Sunday facility usage. Whereas according to Board Policy Number 800, facilities' fields may not be scheduled on Sundays without school board approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approve Sunday usage for the Langhorn-Nishamani United Soccer Club on Sun... has requested Sunday usage for Maple Points Fields on Sunday, November 21, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Marrington. Motion's been made, seven point zero nine. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Cirillo, would you do seven point one zero, please?
I'd like to make a motion for seven point one zero Settlement Agreement. Whereas the Nishamani School District has outlined a private and confidential agreement with the family of student... right there. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves providing for the educational programming as specified in said agreement.
Motion's been made on seven point one zero. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero. That brings us to our closing meeting. Section 801, Other Board Business. Is there anyone who wants to bring any other board business?
Yes, Mr. Piratano and fellow board members. I'd like to put a motion on the table that the Nishamani School District hereby recognize September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and direct Nishamani to go gold in September.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, for that motion. A motion's been placed on the table to recognize Nishamani September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. May I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to Mr. Kovitz because Mr. Kovitz shares a similar situation as you do and Sarah. And, you know, we want you to know that we're all... we're touched by your reach out to us and how brave you were to come to the podium. And I heard from your school how great the event went at Pecessing. And we're all eager to support you doing such and bringing awareness and trying to combat this disease. And we're so glad to see you up there at the podium, being so well-presented and really energetic and energized about this cause. It's really great to see that.
Ms. Arvy, I also accept your lunch offer. Thank you.
There you go.
You'll have to bring some friends as chaperones. So do you have an executive assistant I can reach out to, or should I come visit you at Pecessing and schedule directly with you? Come visit you at Pecessing?
Okay.
Okay. All right. We'll talk soon, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Does anyone else from the board have any comments on this issue?
Yeah, I do. So Sarah, as from one childhood survivor to another, I salute you. And I'm so happy to hear that there's more people that get to share in that winner's circle of remission. It's a wonderful place to be, so.
Hearing no other from the board. Motion's been placed on the table. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero. This will bring us to our second public comment period. There is no call... signup list for second public comment. Just approach the podium. Same rules apply. You have three minutes. State your name, your occupation area, which you live, and no personal attacks. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Katie.
Katie, you want to hit the red button? You got it. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Katie. I'm new here. I just moved in June to send my daughter to Toanaka, so that's why I missed the sign-in sheet. I'm an ultrasound tech is what I do, and I just had a quick question.
Sorry, did you state your last name?
Nahil.
How you spell that?
N as in Nancy. A-H.
A-E.
L-L.
L-L. Thank you.
So I submitted a couple religious exemption requests for the mask for my five-year-old daughter. They were denied. But so I guess my question was, how do I get approved for the other? I'm just going to read what you sent me. So from the Order of the Acting Secretary of Pennsylvania Department of Health directing face coverings in school entities under exemptions... Sorry, my mic's shaking. In Section 3, Subsection B, and quotations begin, "If wearing a face covering would either cause a medical condition or exacerbate an existing one, including respiratory issues that impede breathing, a mental health condition or disability." I was just wondering how I can get approved for that exemption? If there's like an official form I should fill out or...
We'll address that in board comment.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to approach the microphone?
Jennifer Brown, Georgetown Development. Actually, this is for Sarah. Do you have any more ribbons?
I think he...
And do you guys collect money?
No.
Okay.
Well, no, we don't have any more ribbons.
I just want to say that, Sarah, you're so brave. You move me to tears. And I don't want to take your ribbon, honey.
She has more.
I'm just going to say, Sarah, you are so brave. And just continue the fight, honey. We're all right behind you, and we will go gold for you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Berkeley. You already know my name. I'm back up here about masks because it'd be really nice to see my friends' faces again. I mean, we've been over this for two years. This has been happening. I want masks to be optional, please.
Okay. Thank you.
He gave her a locker.
She got a locker.
So I don't know how you say no to that.
Is there anyone else which approach the podium?
Hi, my name is Tim Locke. I live in Quincy Hollow, and as you can tell by the smile, I'm a bus driver. Post-ratification bus driver. Couple things. First, I want to thank the board. Mr. Piratano and I have had communications quite a few times. I want to be part of the solution. You know, nobody here is to be part of the problem. This is definitely a step in the right direction. So I appreciate you guys thinking of us post-ratification people, and we're definitely headed in the right direction. Another thing, I just want to touch on last Monday, the 20th. A message went out saying we were 18 drivers short. That's not 18 called out sick. Currently, we are about seven open routes. That means when we show up for work in the morning, there's already... it's like seven people called out. But we're handling it. That was the perfect storm. We had a little COVID cake, you know, little COVID went through. There was a handful of people. We... we're all old. I took this job five years ago, and I was like a puppy in our department. So we get sick. We have medical conditions. But that day, two people called out sick. That's all. Two people, Monday the 20th, you know, called out sick. So it was just a perfect storm, but we got by. But, you know, thanks to Mr. Millian, and thanks to Mr. Irwin, and thanks to Kelly Kozic for handling the phones. But that's not what you taxpayers pay them to do. When I opened up my door Monday the 20th, it was like public comment, you know, to the elementary school parents. They open up the door. What happened? Was it a sick-out? You know, no, it wasn't a sick-out. It was just, you know, like I just explained. And I try to explain to them in the 30 seconds that I have. But we're getting it done. Our dispatcher, Don, here, he's a guy that's missing half his ear from handling the phone calls that he gets every day. You know, this guy, I wouldn't want his job for $80 an hour. But I just want you to, you know, bear with us. We just hired five tonight. That's really... that's 40 students that can be picked... That's really, that's 40 students that can be picked up without having to use a CDL driver. So, you know, we can work together. We're moving in the right direction. And lastly, young lady, you are like a rock star. Don't forget transportation in your, you know, yellow September. We'd love to support yous too, okay? Just reach out, and, you know, we'll get our yellow ribbons or yellow shirts or whatever we want to do, okay? Thank you again.
Anyone else wish to approach the podium? Once, twice? Okay. We're going to move on then to board comment. Does anyone from the board wish to have any commentary this evening?
Probably Adam, but he went out.
Someone ought to fire me, really. Dr. McGee always gets our first commentary of the evening, and I missed him again. Go right ahead, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Just some follow-up on some questions. Just at this morning's cabinet meeting, we made the final decision that, beginning next week, we will open up our indoor facilities to community youth organizations. So, that includes core swimming and all those programs. We believe we can do that with our staff and safely. I see some confusion about the mask exemptions. Just last Thursday, the superintendents of Bucks County were on with the deputy director or the deputy secretary of education from Harrisburg. The specifics are very clear. What Neshamenee does is actually less than what's required by requiring a licensed medical professional, doctor, counsel, therapist, et cetera. The process is really going through the process that establishes a document, whether it be for a learning disability or a physical disability. That process is much lengthier. We'll be glad to start that process, and I'll talk to Mrs. Nahil afterwards. But the process that's in place actually shortens that process because in that longer process, there still is a something professional that documents that there is a need for this particular accommodation. So, we're just cutting to that point. So, that's, and obviously, not all school districts are following what that requirement is. And we've heard about the three that aren't. So, hopefully, that clarifies that, the rationale behind it, and I'll talk to parents individually after the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Perrotto.
Thank you. Does any other board member have any commentary for this evening?
Actually, I'd like to say something.
Go right ahead, Mr. Sharilla.
I just want to commend Mrs. Pennington, Mr. Staub, Dr. McGee, and the administration. Homecoming this past Saturday was amazing. I was very happy to see it back on a weekend. It was an amazing weather day. It was great to see the campus filled with students being students. So, but it was amazing. I appreciate all the hard work and dedication that everybody did to it, and it was a very memorable day.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're good? Mr. Allen, did you want to say something? Go right.
I'm fired.
Did you raise your hand?
I did.
I look, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
I also wanted to say congratulations to Jessica Earl Wyler and John Rose on their winning homecoming court, King and Queens. Congratulations. It was a great day. The kids have a lot of fun. It's nice to see some normalcy. And just to comment to all the parents, over the last couple of months, and it doesn't really matter which side of the argument you are on, and one thing I always tell my parents, and I always taught them when I was an advocate, is you are the best advocate for your child. And regardless of why you are here tonight, please continue to come out and advocate for your children. Even when this, all these issues are done and we get back to normalcy, it would like to see, like, more involvement and this continue, this community involvement, and people coming out and speaking their mind, and kids standing up for what they believe in, and parents offering suggestions on how we can get better as a district. So, please, when all this gets back to normal and everybody agrees again and we're all friends again, please continue to advocate for your children. You are the only one that can advocate for your kids. You're the best one. So, please keep coming out. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. I have a few things I'd like to discuss. I'm going to echo what Mrs. Bowman just said. You are the best advocate for your child, and we do appreciate you coming out, even when you yell at us. For the students who spoke, I am beyond impressed. And you see what happens when you ask? I was moved to make that motion, and I knew I'd have the support. So, Sarah, I'm just blown away. I don't know that I could have done that at your age. I'm very much impressed. And for the other students talking about the masks, I, listen, we do hear you. I can only ask for your patience as we deal with the paperwork, red tape, Harrisburg. But please hang in there a little longer. And I, and we do appreciate it. That brings me to a couple things. Homecoming Saturday was fantastic. All the teams that played, it was a heartbreak for the football team, and I believe the girls, I forget. All right. It, the, it was a beautiful day. And for our first-year, you know, athletic director taking it over, I know she was incredibly stressed. I think she did, they all did a fantastic job. It was great to see the kids, our students, in the stadium, our parents coming out, a handful of us board members were able to come. It was just a great day all around, and again, couldn't have asked for a more beautiful day. Brings me to the tech board. What we're, what that is about is the bond issue. We've spoken a couple times about it, but the tech school is in need of serious renovations. We started with a huge plan, and we've kind of whittled it down to what we could get, and it revolves roofing, environmental factors, AC, heating, and fire suppression systems. Our district's percentage of that cost of all of the districts involved, the tech school through our compact with the tech, is about 27%. That's what this is about. We are allowing them to begin to look and shop for a bond, and we are agreeing that 27% of that will be our responsibility. That's what that's about. Why we do that? I just wanted to bring this up because last night at tech board, Neshamenee parent came. She spoke. She spoke to the board about an issue, a masking issue. Not surprising. But I really want to talk about the conversation I had with her later. She was so enthusiastic about the tech school. And she has three students, three children she's put through the, one son went through the Applied Engineering Technologies, which is near and dear to me because my father taught the precursor to that back in the '70s. He was one of the first instructors who got that whole program off the ground. It's worked into much more than when he did instrumentation and control. But that made me so happy to hear that. Another son working free in the cabinetry and fine woodworking, and he is actually tutoring some of the younger students. And he's thinking down the road, you know, I might like to do this for the rest of my life. You know, I may want to become an instructor in mechanical arts. And the last, she has a daughter in cosmetology who is just, you know, over the moon that she's back in the cosmetology lab and working at her profession, her trade, down the road. I have a friend whose daughter graduated from the welding program. These are all Neshamenee students. And she, her mother often tells me how well she's doing. She's working in the welding trade, and she's actually done so well in the three years since she's graduated, she's buying a home. I was nowhere near buying a home three years out of high school. So, I just, you know, we sit on this board and we advocate for the tech, our tech students, Neshamenee. Mrs. Bowman and I, we represent you with the board. We stick up for what we feel are Neshamenee's needs for our students. And, you know, having a conversation with parents like that, it just reaffirms or validates our interest in that and continued support of those students. And that just blew me away. I just had a wonderful, I walked out of that board, besides the cookies and coffee. I was feeling just fantastic.
He's talking to people.
And last, I would like to just say on Sunday, I had the privilege of attending the Lower Bucks County Vietnam Memorial Dedication Ceremony that a very good friend of mine put together. He's, it's a three-year, three-year journey for him that started, actually, longer than that. It started with the Traveling Wall that he was able to bring to Pendell, my hometown. I grew up in Pendell. And that led to, those connections led to, you know, we really don't have anything in Bucks County for Vietnam veterans. And between, you know, his connections through the Pendell Parade, through the Traveling Wall, and all led him to this effort with our state representatives and Congressman Fitzpatrick. We all kind of, you know, got together, and he put this, had a memorial designed and crafted for our lower, for our veterans, Vietnam veterans from Bucks County. There are 95 of them. 94 did not come home. One is still classified missing in action. But I just wanted to say, if you do have the opportunity, it's a beautiful memorial. It was a wonderful ceremony. But it's at Veterans Park in Middletown off of 413, and I highly recommend swinging by and taking a moment to reflect what those gentlemen gave us, our freedom. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Very well said for the Vietnam veterans. Let me just close up real quick. Mr. Powell came to the podium and spoke very passionately about, you know, what he believes. And he made an argument, and his argument was for logic, is what his argument was. Unfortunately, we're dealing with the government, and logic doesn't apply.
But you guys.
All right. You made a very good argument. But I have an order from the Pennsylvania Department of Health who's threatening boards with legal action if you don't comply. I have an order from which the Bucks County Department of Health. I have a Bucks County Department of Health that in the prior years made available the director to work directly individually with the district to design a plan that works for our district and our, and our community. That was taken away from us. My superintendent no longer has access to speak with Dr. Damsker. He no longer can have that one-on-one communication that we've had before. That's a county issue. Nothing in this board did it here. That was done at the county level. I didn't agree with it. I don't like it. He gets on these superintendent calls, and there's no longer a medical person on the calls anymore that he has where before, there was always a medical representative on those calls from the county when he had them. So, that sticks us with what he has to manage the schools with. Now, what Council Rock and CB and Pembroke are doing, I have no idea. Okay? Because from everything I read, it falls outside the letters that we got from the state saying what you have to do for a mask exemption. The state wants you to follow the same exact plan that you would do for a 504, correct? And an IDEA, which is Dr. McGee. Dr. McGee explained earlier, he has instituted something that is less than that, that he feels still meets that requirement. That process takes what? 60 to 90 days sometimes to complete that process?
Sometimes even longer.
Sometimes even longer. Okay? So, he has gone that far that he feels comfortable enough, and with guidance from our solicitor, that, you know, we can, you know, as long as we have a licensed medical professional, because that's what a 504 and a IDEA plan require, that we will still be in the right in order. But that's what the state is, we've all got that notification. Why other boards have decided to do what they've done, that's up to that individual board. Okay? So, we can't, you know, go, I don't, I won't bring that motion to the table. That will definitely fly in the face of the legal guidance that we've got, not only from our solicitor, but we've also got from the PDA. And if you want to expand upon that just slightly, what recently the state has said about immunity of school board members in relationship to the Act?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Yes, I mean, they didn't, there's an FAQ section, I'll just say, on the Department of Education website. You have the order, the masking order, then you have the FAQs, which interpret the order. And the FAQ sections, there's little questions and answers, pretty much say, you know, they don't come out and say personal liability for board members, but they come pretty close to it. They could, you know, it's a gray area, so.
And basically, board members are basically identified by the district exercising their normal duties.
That's correct, yes.
That's correct, right.
So, that indemnity is at risk.
Right, that indemnity is at, could be at risk. The lawsuit that other people brought that was supposed to be heard on the 16th got postponed, so you have no idea where that's going at. So, we are trying to take what we believe are the most minimalistic actions to come into the school. As far as the 18 days that people spoke about the podium, when the governor took control of this, it took it away from us. If we were under the plan that Neshamenee Board agreed with, our July plan, which our administration recommended, which our Bucks County Department of Health Director was okay with, okay? Based upon the numbers that we see today, we would probably be reverting back to the July plan, okay? We had a plan in place that would have allowed us to gauge how that spread would be through the school. That all went out the window. The only gauge we have now is this environment that we currently have when everyone's masked. When the state is going to relinquish this order, I don't know. Whether courts are going to relinquish the order, I don't know. Whether my superintendent is going to get guidance from the Bucks County Department of Health that will allow him to reinstitute modified quarantine, which is what kept our kids in school last year, because he was able to work with the Bucks County Department of Health. Right now, if he has to exclude people, he has no leeway in that. Could you just expand upon that a little bit, the differences?
Sure. Modified quarantine was a process that really didn't make sense last year because we were, again, in a mask mandate. But the idea being if there weren't masks and you were a close contact, you're, instead of being excluded to school, you'd have to mask for 14 days. So, that option, we took into, we brought on board last April to stop us from excluding literally hundreds of kids to school because they were within six feet. That option's not available to us now because it's not endorsed by the Bucks County Department of Health. So, for every child that was positive, following the rules of the CDC, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, and now the Bucks County Department of Health, every child within six feet of one positive child, symptomatic or not, as long as they were not vaccinated, would have to be excluded from school for 10 days. This is more restrictive than the plan we ran last year to open up our secondary schools all in at less than six feet. So, that is, that is the burden. It's not just the mask or one thing, but whether they, whether they reduce the spread of the virus aside for a second, the exclusion rules or the quarantine rules, we don't quarantine kids, we just exclude them. Those rules in effect without the masks actually cause more kids to be sent out of school unless we opt to not follow those rules as well. So, that is, that is the conundrum at the moment, keeping kids in school as most, as best as possible, as many as possible. And right now, the rules favor masks to do that as compared to unmasked unless both sets of rules change.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. So, that's where it leaves us as a board, community, in response to this order. We can either, you know, go out on our own and see where the dominoes fall, or we just follow, or we just follow the rules and regulations that are on the books. This board has decided that we're going to follow the rules and regulations as they're presented to us. rules and regulations as they're presented to us, and that's the, the guidance that we're getting, and that's the, and that's the way it's going to stay, the state and the county have, have, have been the drivers behind where we're at, they're the ones that are above us, got to remember we're at the bottom of the, of the level when it comes to the statutory scheme of how the government works, so, those that are above us has put in the motion these, and they're going to have to relinquish them, or some court is going to have to, have to tell them that what they did isn't, isn't allowable, so that's, that's where, where we're at. As far as our other speaker, Sarah, I'm so glad that you were able to come, as I said, and, and, and speak on your issue, and, and the board was well receptive of that, and it's a small gesture we can do, still, all the work is going to be on, on your part, and getting it moving, but we'll help out where, where we can help, where we can help you do it, and make sure Dr. McGee pays for lunch, okay, don't, don't, don't let him stick you with the bill, okay, no Dutch, okay, just, you know, just makes, makes, makes sure he pays with the bill. Bricklin, did we get you a locker this year? The locker, okay, we're halfway there, we're, we're trying for the rest, but, we're, we're, we're halfway there, and, that's all I have, I think everybody else covered just as much as we could, and, you know, hopefully, keep pressing on, on the county, keep pressing on, on the governor's office, you know, last, you know, I caught a lot of flack back in the summer of 2020, when I asked the, you know, the residents of this community to call the governor's office and let our students march in graduation, you know, it was written up in the papers, the bad guy that wants to get the kids all COVID, while, you know, Jersey kids were, were marching, you know, and kids in other states were marching, they wouldn't allow us to have a normal graduation ceremony in 2020, we, we finally sneaked it in, in August, we snuck it in, and, and we got it done, but we lost some kids because of the time change, you know, but that's what you have to do, you got to be on the state, you got to be on the county, you got to be on your local legislature, you know, they're trying to move, they're trying to get things done, but it's, it's, as I explained to Mr. Powell's argument, he wants logic in a political environment, and this thing has been so political-sized, so political, that, that logic doesn't matter, and it's unfortunate, but that's what this has become, it's become the biggest political football, you know, in the state, and, and, and I do believe, you know, the kids are getting the bad end of it, but, you know, that's all, that's all we can do, this, this isn't questioning time, I know you want to ask something, I'll talk, I'll talk to you afterwards if you want, all right, so does anyone have anything else? A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solbak, thank you all for coming out this evening.